What's the password?
C O A O guess.
What do you need the password? It's right there on the shelf, right in the window.
Yep.
I can't see that.
That's all right.
But Darren's not gonna be here. Who else was not gonna be here?
I think Stacy can be here. Oh, this should be her.
And periodically, we've been asking Eric for like... Oh my gosh, at this point, maybe five, six years. And I know he's been asking, working on it, but...
This room?
You should have a tablet on your desk.
A desk?
Yeah, we're within, maybe not full internet access, but...
Oh, right, right, yeah.
...like access to the city site, charter ordinances, state statutes.
Yeah.
So, Megan, is that, is that thing supposed to come on?
Uh, is it green?
Huh?
Is it green?
No, the, um, the little white box says on air on it. Our mics are on, but...
Uh, let me, let me try to turn on.
That's just what the tech back told me last time, so...
I did that when we first moved to Zoom, just to see what the lag was.
Oh, you watched yourself?
It was like, oh, yeah, there was definitely a lag.
There we go.
There it is.
All right, good evening, all. Welcome to the March 25th, 2021 special meeting of the Auburn Planning Board. I'd like to start today with a roll call from the members. We'll start over here on my right.
Evan Seer.
Dana Staples.
Riley Bergeron.
Good Martelli.
Brian Dubois.
And I'm Matt Duval, Chair. With the consent of the board, since we are absent full members this week, I would suggest that Mr. Dubois be elevated from associate member to full member for this meeting, allowing him to make motions and vote. All in favor? Great, thank you. All right, we will begin with a public hearing ordinance amendment on proposed amendment of Chapter 60, Article 2, Section 60-34, Buildings per Lot of the Auburn Code of Ordinances to allow secondary dwelling units where two-family homes are permitted.
Yeah, so I know you've all received a few emails today about this item, and I think it's important first, just to make sure that we're, we should separate the items, I guess. The first item we should talk about is the, allowing the additional dwelling unit. And then the second item would be allowing two families in the low-density country. And then the third item would be the ag zone component of it. So I think it's important process-wise that we separate it into those three components, just so that we make sure that we can get a recommendation to the City Council on at least one of them without having the conversation jumbled and going in 10 different directions. So that would be my recommendation, but...
Yep, so that sounds good to me. And just to clarify, the language, what we're actually assessing now is 60-34, right?
Correct.
And we've been asked to consider expanding that to low...
Low-density country, yeah.
Low-density country residential and the agricultural resource and conservation district.
Correct.
And consider is not the same as... Give your thoughts on this specific language regarding 60-34, so I just wanted to note that, too.
Yeah, so the language that we put in your staff report is in blue. And at the last meeting, we were kind of trying to wordsmith on the spot some language that would make this provision clear and also accomplish what we want to accomplish by allowing another principal structure on a lot. So the language that we came up with, we broke it down into bullet points. So the first bullet point allows a, so the language, I should back up for a second. The language says, "No more than one principal building shall be erected on any lot in any residential zoning district except for..." First one would be multi-family buildings or developments that are approved under Division 9 of Article 4 of this chapter, which are the planned unit development standards in the ordinance. So that one's already in there, so that's really not a change at all. The second one is allowing an additional one-family detached dwelling in a zoning district where two families are permitted and a single-family dwelling unit currently exists on the lot. So this second piece is the new language that we'd be adding to allow. I don't want to call it a secondary dwelling. I don't want to call it an in-law because it's, it's really not an in-law. It's another principal, single-family dwelling on a lot that already has a single-family dwelling. So we tried to make that clear in the language. We also added in that they have to share a curb cut unless there's a location that could provide safer access than what exists now. So with this, I would recommend at least this component, making a recommendation to City Council. And then as the Part 2 and 3, the low-density country and then the ag zone components of the discussion as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we can enter the public comment portion of this hearing.
I make a motion to open the public comments section of the hearing.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor? Thank you. At this time, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to the board on this item, they should come forth, do so.
So the community room is closed, so I don't think there's anyone here, so...
So make a motion to close the public comment. Thank you, I have a motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, now, discussion for the board. Thoughts on this?
I, I think it absolutely makes sense in those areas where a secondary dwelling is already allowed. In reading the language, I think staff did a good job taking off our boxes and being clear as to what the intent was. I do have one suggestion, though, the sentence, "The additional one-family detached dwelling unit shall share a driveway curb cut with the primary dwelling unless it is determined," and the sentence goes on, to read, "shall share a driveway curb cut with the pre-existing dwelling." Just to keep in the spirit of saying that it is simply a second house. One is not subjugate to the other.
Thank you. Other thoughts from the board? Hearing none, I agree. I think staff did a good job. I agree with Mr. Seer's proposed language change. If there are more, no more questions or thoughts about this, we could entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to forward a positive recommendation for the language presented in blue on the staff report dated March 25th, 2021, with the amendment that the last sentence referred to a pre-existing dwelling instead of a primary dwelling for those zones in which a second family, in which a second unit is already allowed.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept the, the language in blue with the language change proposed by Mr. Seer. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Or actually, is there any discussion of the motion? Nope, seeing none? All those?
Actually, one, one question. So any residential zoning district, this excludes those other two zoning districts that we had previously discussed.
Well, I thought we determined that we were gonna take those in, in order and as separate discussions.
Well, I just want to make sure that this wording doesn't include those accidentally.
Well, my, my motion was specific to those zones that currently allow for a, a two-family dwelling.
That, that's actually how it's, that it's written in Item 2 here, right?
Thanks.
So that's how 60-34 reads right now.
Perfect.
The same way as this and...
Good, I just wanted to make sure before we voted.
Yep. Any more discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Thanks, the motion passes unanimously. So there are other items in this staff report. They're actually not part of the public hearing. And those two items are to consider, that I'm gonna read from the staff report, and this, as far as I know, is the language, all the language that we've had. "The mayor and council also requested that the planning board consider adding the two-family use allowance to two additional zones, low-density country residential and agricultural and resource protection zones for existing non-conforming homes." Staff, could you go ahead and...
Yeah, so currently, the low-density country residential zoning district is our only residential zoning district that doesn't allow two-family homes. So the language that the planning board just recommended to City Council would not apply, apply to that district. The City Council wanted the planning board to consider expanding the language to allow a second principal structure in the low-density country residential, which I think we can support. It wouldn't be a huge change to that area. The second piece of that was to extend it into the ag zone, which I think is another, another discussion, which is a little more complicated, I think, than the low-density country. So, yeah, I think that's, that one makes sense, but the ag zone is something we want to discuss a little bit more.
Okay, anyone have questions for staff about either of these two items? Actually, let's just take low, low, low-density country residential first. Any questions about that? If not, I actually have one.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So, being the newest member to the committee, I'm just trying to get my bearings. Trying to think of, what's the negative fallout from something like this? Typically, you would think more strain on the community in way of services. My understanding from watching City Council and reading related discussions in the paper and so forth is that we feel like there's capacity in the city of Auburn to extend those services beyond what they are now, which is where the 2,000, the goal of 2,000 additional dwellings in the city comes from, correct?
Correct.
From staff, do you, do you see any negative ramifications from, from this that, that we should be aware of?
So the only, I don't know if I would consider it a negative, but you are increasing the amount of residential units that currently could be built in the low-density country. So right now, the low-density country residential requires three acres per dwelling and then 325 feet of road frontage. So in order to have the second principal structure, they would have to have, if you leave it as is, they would have to have six acres because they need three per dwelling. But they wouldn't have to have the 650 feet of road frontage to meet that, that requirement. So it, it does open up the door for some more dwellings in that area that wouldn't be allowed right now because they wouldn't have that 650 feet of road frontage. If they did, they could split the lot and, you know, they wouldn't have to even consider this provision. So it does open the door for some more, more houses, which is what the city is, is trying to do. And I think it, it makes sense. I don't think there's going to be a lot of them that pop up in that area, but I, I think it does provide the flexibility to the people that are out there that would like to add, you know, an in-law or something. This isn't pertaining to in-laws, but you know what I mean? Like a second dwelling for a family member or... All the comments that we've received have been for family members and those sorts of things. And in that area, I think that's, that's what we would see, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? So I have one. Do you know why it was excluded, why this multi, multi, two, why two-family dwellings were excluded from low-density country residential?
Don't know. It's our most rural zoning district, aside from ag, obviously. It's our most rural residential zoning district with the three acres per lot. The next one up is a one acre per lot, so it's, and, and 250 feet of frontage. This is 325 and three acres. So I think if I had to guess, it would be to preserve that rural character of that area by not allowing two homes on a, a two-family on a six-acre lot. But I don't know the exact history behind that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, thoughts about this from the board?
Is it, hi Megan. So it sounded like what, kind of, I kind of want to echo what Mr. Dubois said, that you don't think that there would be a strain to, on the, the... Purpose here says that, the reason is so that they would have, they wouldn't have to require improved roads and expanded municipal services. You don't think that having a second family on these, in these zones would like have new roads or other costs?
I don't think so. A lot of, out there, they don't have water sewer, most of these areas anyways, so we wouldn't be extending that out there and putting a burden on those systems. The developer or the, the property owner will have to share a driveway, so that'll be on them. The city wouldn't accept a private driveway anyways. So I don't think, in that area, we would run into, into those issues. No one would build a road to public standards just for two houses, I don't think.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Dubois.
Will there be any requirement about with the structures being separate dwellings? Would there be a requirement on separate water supply and waste disposal?
We haven't discussed that. So I don't think there would be any reason why we wouldn't allow them to share those, unless, you know, in the future, if they were to sell off the other house. That's something that they would have to deal with on their own, but I don't think we've, we've discussed the ownership of those and whether or not we'd require them to be shared.
Would it be possible to sell one of the dwellings?
I think so, yeah. It would be kind of like a condo development in, in a sense where either you would sell them the, the dwelling with a portion of the land or you would, without physically splitting it off. Or you would sell them the structure and they'd essentially be renting the land from the property owner of the principal structure. I don't see why they couldn't do it like that. We don't really get involved in those types of transactions, so we wouldn't know for sure, but...
I can understand where they would sell the, the house. I don't understand, can you explain why you believe they would be able to sell off a portion of the land that would essentially create a non-conforming lot? We don't allow that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an actual transaction of a parcel of land. It would just be the structure and a portion of the land that it sits on for whatever that fee would be that the property owner would charge of the principal structure. So we've seen this before, not in this area, obviously, because you can't have the second principal structure there, but we've seen it before where they'll sell off the dwelling unit and a portion of the land that it sits on. And that's a transaction that happens without the city's involvement because they're not physically drawing an up deed that splits the lot into two.
So the, what are they entitled to if they're not entitled to a lot under that, I guess?
You mean entitled?
So, so let's say I've got two units. Mr. Dubois buys one from me and I sell him a portion of the land around the house. So I sold him a house lot, sold him a lot.
Essentially, but you didn't draw up a deed with a new lot line.
So...
It's not an official...
So I didn't, so what we're discussing is, I didn't actually sell the property. What I've sold is essentially, what we're talking about is like an easement right to that property.
Correct.
That's as far as you could go, doing it, doing it the way you're describing.
Yeah, you couldn't do, you couldn't draw a physical line.
You're not actually selling them the land. You're selling them the right to the land, but the lot itself is not split at all.
Right, you couldn't draw a physical line there.
You could probably also do a co-ownership of the entire thing.
Right, you could do a co-ownership of the entire lot. What I'm saying, I was trying to understand this idea of carving off a piece of land around without it being a lot.
Yeah.
And it makes sense if it's an easement to use the land, so that's what you purchased. You purchased the rights to, to use the land, but you haven't purchased the land itself.
It's a private transaction that they would do that the city wouldn't, because we wouldn't allow them to split the lot, so... And they'd have to figure out who owns the driveway, if it's shared and, and all that, too. Who maintains it? That's, that's on them if they decide to sell.
But if you're requiring three acres to build, the only thing that would make it non-conforming is a shared driveway, right?
Um, if it's three acres per unit, they have to have 325 feet of frontage, so...
Okay.
Would be the road frontage.
Yeah, most, well, a lot of them, if they had the frontage, they'd just split it into two lots anyways.
But that requirement would stay. They would, they would need as total as six acres or more.
Well, so that's something that we need to discuss because right now, the language in low-density country residential says three acres, I'll have to check, three acres per lot or three acres per dwelling, but it doesn't allow two-family dwellings right now. So we need to amend the language to allow a two-family dwelling or amend the language that we just recommended to City Council to say a secondary dwelling is allowed accessory to an existing single-family dwelling in the low-density country. So you're not opening up the door for duplexes all over low-density country. You're just allowing another principal structure next to a existing structure. So just some items the planning board's gonna have to think through and include in their recommendation.
Mr. Seer.
Do you have Chapter 60 in, at hand? I'm sorry for not having my copy.
No, I was just gonna pull it up right now.
So my question is how density is defined in a low-country, low-density country residential?
Yeah, all districts, it's defined by unit, but where low-density country only allows one, I want to make sure that it still says unit and not lot.
Right, that's what I'm asking, right, as opposed to...
Yeah, I would be surprised if it said unit.
One dwelling for three acres.
One dwelling for three acres, so...
I, I would want this, if I were to vote positively on anything like this, I would want to have the same restrictions placed on a secondary or a secondary unit to have the same restrictions to build as the primary unit. So for either this or the next item.
Is, is staff able to answer that question? Is each of these second dwelling units considered just a single-family dwelling unit and subject to all, for instance, all setbacks and size, if there were to be size or height requirements, not that there are, but...
Yeah, they would have to meet their setback requirements. And there's also some separation requirements between buildings that the fire department has, so they would have to meet those, too. I, I want to say it's 30 feet, but I don't know for sure.
But, so the second, but the second dwelling would be, would not be treated as like a subjugate of the first and therefore not subject to the full requirements of the ordinance for a single-family dwelling? That, that single-family dwelling would be subject to the full requirements for any other single-family dwelling in that zone?
That's correct. It's, it wouldn't be considered an accessory building. They could do accessory buildings anywhere right now. These are actually considered principal structures, so they're subject to the full setback requirements and everything.
I think it's my preference that as part of this, this agenda item, that we don't change underlying zone wording and that this is just for the one chapter that we changed. I, I wouldn't change any of the, the use regulations for any of the, the other zones. I think those should be separate. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be asked to do that, I think those should be separately done.
So this, just to restate what you said, Mr. Staples, you would favor the council actually make specific requests for a specific request on low, low-density country residential?
Yes.
And a specific request on the ag zone?
Right.
And that those be separate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly.
Yeah, I feel that we voted for what we were asked to vote for.
All right, okay, thank you. Any other thoughts?
When you say specific request, I just want to make sure, are you looking for them to say amend the language in low-density country to allow two families? Or amend the language under the buildings per lot to allow them in the low-density country where a single-family already exists? Or like something like that, either or?
I kind of think that's part of why I think they need to request it.
Okay.
Yep. So in order to ma, any, make any such recommendation, I think we probably need a motion.
Before we move to a motion, we do have another member of the public, and I know that we said we would proceed through the public hearing in three sections. And I would ask that we allow for a public comment for each one of those sections. So my, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to put a, another public comment portion in each section of the hearing that, that we've split out. So motion on the floor to...
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'd make a motion at this time to open the public input section of the hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor? At this time, if there are any members of the public who would like to address the board concerning our consideration of adding a second dwelling unit to low-density country residential, please come forward and state your name, address, and speak your mind to the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brad Kowalski. Our family owns a property at 41 Hershey Hill Drive, which is on the backside of Lake Auburn. We have a mixed-use parcel on our property. It's just shy of 16 and a half acres. In 2010, when the rezoning occurred, the property used to be in a residential zoned portion. zoned portion, and had a very small portion that was in the old forest and farm section that you guys used to have on your books. In two thousand and ten, somebody decided to flip this whole property into ag land, but reserved a very small portion on the corner of Hershey Hill Road and North Auburn Road, um, for residential property, it's just shy of three and a half acres. The property also touches, it, it goes all the way from Hershey Hill Drive all the way down to Holbrook as well, so we touch Holbrook, we touch, uh, North Auburn Road, and we also touch Hershey Hill Road. We purchased this property in September of two thousand and seventeen for my mom and dad to live at, they're elderly, my father's eighty-nine, my mother's eighty-four, and we wanted them to be in a community that had everything that the elderly needs at their fingertips, which Auburn does in fact have, and we have used the local hospital. Unfortunately, um, January fifteenth, my father had a stroke, and yesterday, we were back at the hospital because he had a fall issue and had to get rushed to the hospital yesterday. I actually reside in the town of Sumner, um, since two thousand and fourteen, and fourteen years in Bryant Pond prior to that. I am a builder, I do install septic systems since nineteen eighty-nine, so I'm familiar with dividing land and, uh, separating parcels for homes, I've done it several times in other towns, so I'm pretty familiar with what you're speaking of right now tonight. What we had hoped to do, um, when we purchased our home, we were told by our realtor that we could separate the residential section off of our property and either sell it or build on it. We were not aware of the septic ordinance, which is a whole other can of worms for us. Uh, we've been trying to meet that thirty-six inch ordinance now for over a year, and we finally hired a geologist who said, "It's not possible, it's not gonna happen in this area, you, you're on glacial till, you do not have the, um, naturally occurring organic soils to support what they're asking you to do." So, our next step was, I, I contacted the town about a year ago, and I said, "Look, I wanna put a separate guest home on the property because we have almost seventeen acres of land, and I'd like to attach that with its own septic system, have its own driveway and such, because we have the proper, uh, road frontage that you need to do, everything that you need to do." And I started getting hit with one big barrier after another, you know, first it was, "You're on ag land, you can't have two houses on ag land, you can't even have a separate apartment attached to your parents' house on ag land." And I thought, "Now, what the heck am I gonna do?" You know, we bought this because I myself am fifty-five and I need to take care of my parents, and I can't be living a half an hour away from them, I need to be right next door to them for when an emergency occurs. So, being a builder, I started seeing like all of these red lights flashing in front of me going, "Oh, my God, you know, I can't believe a lot of this stuff's not permissible in this town, how can you not allow a separate dwelling on a property this large? Why, why are we even in ag land, number one? Because we are not meeting the regulations for ag land, we are not making any money at all off the land, it is a forested piece of property and we would like it to stay forested, it's a beautiful, uh, naturally sloping piece of land and it's just, it's a beautiful piece of property, so we wouldn't wanna destroy that and do anything agricultural on it. So, we are not meeting the ag requirements, number one. Over thirteen acres is tied up in that section, we do have almost three and a half acres of residential that, I'm not seeing it being residential either because we can't build on it, we can't get a septic design for it. My only saving grace that I'm hoping for is that the town accepts and approves that you are permitted to put two homes on it, that they rethink their zoning in this area and put this property back into residential like it should be, as well as many of the other properties in our area that are not meeting the ag requirements. They, they should be rezoned again to residential status. So, I'm hoping that somewhere in the near future, some of these things start happening. The septic thing is a whole other issue for us, but when the home was built in nineteen eighty-seven, the original builder, uh, or the person whom had the home built was Bill Hardy, and at that time, the SE found, so he says, that there was forty-nine inches in the test pit of acceptable soil, and that's what they designed the system that's there on the property. It's only a three-bedroom system for a home that's actually four bedrooms, but one does not have a closet, so it's a three-bedroom house. The system is thirty-five years old, it was built in nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, so it falls out of the actual grandfather situation for replacement systems. So, if we were to replace this system, which will fail sometime very soon because it's thirty-five years old, the field, it's a chambered system, it is not gonna last another ten years, I'm sure, we don't even fall into the requirements of having the ability to meet the nine-inch standard like everybody else in the area that was built pre-eighty-three can meet. So, we're kinda in a really bad way here with this property. Um, but I guess with this evening, not to get too far off the topic, uh, when I found out that you guys were, and ladies were talking this evening about this possibility of putting a second structure on a home, to me, it makes perfect sense, not only because I would serve our, our family well by being able to actually add a home, I would love to be able to build a home on the three-acre residential side, and if I can't meet septic requirements, I would love to be able to use the forty-nine inches that's on record that the LPI in this town signed off on in nineteen eighty-seven and pump my affluent over and expand the system three more bedrooms, so I could actually build a home that's usable and creating tax revenue for this town. It's not gonna hurt the, the area by doing this because we have almost seventeen acres of land. You could put three more homes on our property realistically that wouldn't even see each other or affect the community in any way, shape, or form, they would be using the same roads, it would be using the same trash service, he would stop right at the same location to pick up the same trash of the other three neighbors that are there. So, it wouldn't be a, a, a negative impact on the community at all, it would be positive because you would be getting tax revenue. But I do think that if you are going to consider allowing more than one dwelling on a property, I've done this several times in other, in other areas, I put three homes on a thirty-acre parcel in Bryant Pond, and the way that we did that there, I know it's Backwoods, smaller town, but they made us have a legal description by a surveyor, take the, the property and say, "Okay, you have the required amount of land," which in that town was a minimum of one acre, "So, you can separate that out," but they did not make us deed it separately like Auburn's doing here, because it was staying, like our property, for instance, would stay in my father's name because it's, it's all left to me in the will anyway. So, we would be leaving the entire parcel in my father's name, building a second home with a legal description and not deeding anything out until if and when down the road, say after he passed away, we decided to sell one of the homes, it would meet the town's requirements to obtain a deed and, 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 uh, all the proper things that go along with it. It doesn't make sense to put a, a home on a property that you're only gonna be conveying a portion of a home, but you couldn't separate that home out and sell it. That's creating more problems down the road for the homeowners, it's creating more problems for the town and everybody involved if you allow something like that to happen. It should meet whatever the town says, if it's three acres and it has road frontage where you're going to allow shared driveways, it should all meet those requirements that you have set forth to get a building permit to avoid further issues down the road. But I really, myself, don't see any reason why the town does not allow a, a, a secondary home on a property. It just makes sense, you know, especially on a, on a property of our size, it's almost seventeen acres of land, and it's just sitting there, useless land, it would be really nice, our intended use when we purchased it was to put a guest home on it, that we could help my son and myself, could help, you know, my elderly parents in their last days or last and final time, and then make a decision, you know, maybe my son would take one of the homes and I would take the other home and, and live in it for the rest of our lives, but, you know, I don't, I don't know, but, uh, I just wanted to at least let you guys know like what we're being faced with, with the zoning issues and, and such, just so you can have an idea from someone who is in a situation that would really like to see something like this happen. So, I thank you for letting me speak and, uh, taking the time to listen to me tonight, and if there's any questions you have for me, please have at it, you know, hit me with them, I'm, I'm more than open to your questions.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Make a motion to close this public, uh, input section of the hearing.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay, um, so we've heard from the public, uh, on this, um, any further comments, thoughts from the board? Yeah, Mr. Seer.
Uh, so, I think the comments we just heard from the public, um, they sort of, uh, it, it, it should, um, cause the planning board to think about what we're talking about, so, uh, a, a, an individual that already has a lot that can legally be split into lots isn't required to go through this process, wouldn't be required to go through this process if this process were allowed, right? And if this process were allowed, it would still require that the person have a lot that meets all of the requirements except for the road frontage. So, um, I hope that highlights for the planning board that you are not, that, that, the, the decision like this is not increasing density above what we've already decided is appropriate for the, the zone. And it's an option that someone will only exercise if they can't split their lot to begin with. I think it does bring up, uh, again, sort of the discussion that we were having with staff earlier about what happens when the house is sold, uh, the public comment, uh, there was a comment made that we should only be allowing this on lots that can already essentially be split, um, the idea being that we do allow this on lots that are already, that can be split, we just require that they be split first. So, um, I guess, yes, th- there are implications for, uh, for ownership of property down the line, but it's a sort of thing that, uh, requires the seller and the buyer to really understand if, if one of those properties were to be bought and sold and understand, um, y- if I'm buying a house from someone, am I buying the house and an easement to use a certain part of the property, or am I buying the property and giving them an easement to use a portion of the property for their house or so on and so forth? But if, if we start to debate, uh, that, I think we're getting into nuances there, I mean, I'm not sure really are, are purview, so.
I agree, thank you, Mr. Martelli?
Over the past month, um, I've been approached by approximately five people, either by phone or by conversation, and this gentleman's situation is not unique, it's throughout the entire city, and we need to help these people out, you know, if they've got enough room to be able to put a second home, why not? You know, it makes it better for the city to be able to have, you know, more, uh, citizens, gets a better tax base, and it keeps people employed in the local area, you know, such as builders and contractors, so we need to look at this.
Mr. Seer?
I think it's important that the board understand that the comment, based on the comments we heard, this actually wouldn't help that situation. What I heard was a lot that was conforming to, that, that could have a parcel that could be split off and be conforming within a residential zone and be built on, uh, except for the, Lake Auburn watershed overlay, um, and the, um, sewage requirements within that overlay. The, but the remaining lot isn't large enough to split into two agricultural lots either, right? Uh, even if the, even if the residential section were to be, uh, retained. So, I think when we think about who, who we're helping and, I, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is, this might not be as broad and sweeping a change as some folks might think it is going to be or want it to be. It still requires that you have, for instance, if, not that we're talking about the ag zone, but when we do get to discussions of the ag zone, now you're talking about a ten-acre lot, right? Uh, when we're talking about low-density country residential, you're really talking about this only being allowed on a six-acre lot if we were to move forward with language that would allow this in a, uh, uh, low-density country residential. And so, I, I just felt compelled to say that we should be helping homeowners, uh, a- and, and landowners to be able to use their land responsibly, but it certainly does not apply to, I think, as many people as, as some think it does. Thank you.
Thank you, any other thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I guess, uh, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd just like to think out loud about this.
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the map, uh, for this gentleman, and I agree with Mr. Seer, I think there, the other issues make this not, uh, it doesn't qualify for, for our discussion because of, of wastewater elements that we can't do, but if you look at the dimensions of this lot, I mean, there's probably no better fit than this lot because of the, the, uh, how it's laid out with, uh, road frontage on three roads, um, that if there were to be a, a second dwelling, this would lend itself to it, um, if not for the other obstacles. But I think this is exactly what we're talking about, other, otherwise, I mean, it's, it's, you could have proximity to your, your family but not be on top of your family, um, I don't know, I just, uh, I, I, I agree with Mr. Martelli, I, I think, uh, we ought to give the, to the community, give it some strong consideration.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments from the board?
It does look like there's enough acreage there to, to build a secondary unit with what we've already voted for.
That's correct, yes, that's aside from the septic.
Right.
Constraints, but we just allowed secondary, well, we recommended that secondary dwellings be allowed in the rural res, so, um, they could put one here if they could meet the septic.
This reminds me of, uh, uh, what Mr. Bilodeau did on North Auburn Road, uh, when he was told that he could not, he, he owned a, a reasonably large, uh, piece of property and still does, uh, but was told that he would never be able to build a house on it because of the septic ordinance. So, he did scour his land for a test pit and, um, he built it, and he built three houses, and, and two of them are sold, uh, and they, the other two have easements to, I think his septic might not actually be on his property anymore, I think it was sold, the easement rights to that, um, to that septic, so, um, it, it, I think it's important, I, and I guess I bring that up just to say that it's important, uh, for people to understand that the septic ordinance is incredibly strict, uh, there are ways that you can, uh, build houses responsibly and still meet the, the septic requirements. And, and I guess I just bring it up to say, now that we've done this, um, just to recommend to staff that they make sure they have those discussions with folks that are in the Lake Auburn watershed overlay, um, that that be part of the discussion, uh, that they have with those folks, whether those people bring that, bring that topic up or not, just so that they understand what options are available given the constraints.
Agree, thank you very much. So, Mr. Staples?
Yeah, so, I, I, I guess I would just go back to, I, I feel pretty strongly that we were asked to, to look at the buildings per lot, section sixty dash thirty-four, and we did that, and I- And I feel that if we were to look at specific language in the zoning ordinances, that we should look at those zoning, those zones holistically and not just as far as what the Buildings Per Lot section talks about. So I think that we really need to take a look at how else it affects those zones. And I think that that's beyond, you know, our task tonight.
Thank you. So do you have a motion that you would like to make?
I move that we table this to a date certain when the council asks us specifically to do something. I think, well, it's not a very good motion. I would move that we table this indefinitely, pending further council guidance.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No. To be clear, you're talking about tabling the discussion about the low-density country residential and the ag zone, those two parts of it?
Yes.
Well, at the moment, we're talking about low-density country residential.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of this?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Mr. Dubois.
So again, there's only so much time where I can claim ignorance as the rookie member of the board, but I'll do it while I can. This is a workshop. And is this the time to discuss this, these types of things, without having to come up with a a real decision or recommendation, but to to process it and explore it?
So I think, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but my understanding is that I'm not sure if this is a workshop or not. I don't believe it is. This, we were sent very nonspecific language by city council, and my understanding of the motion on the table is a request for specific language from city council, which would then allow us to have a workshop on that language and explore it in further detail, and then hold a public hearing on that specific language.
Okay, my misunderstanding, I figured since we weren't meeting on a regular schedule, this was categorized as a workshop.
Mr. Seer?
I understand that it would be, we, and this is coming from me, right? I'm the reason that we sent this back to them and told them, you know, not I'm the reason, I was one of the proponents for sending this back and saying, you know, you need to send us something specific, it needs to be a vote, you can't just tell us you want us to do something, and we'll assume that it's part of a formal process. I think that, speaking for myself, I know what I want from city council. And so I'm not in favor of tabling this and asking for their opinion. My personal feelings on the point, on this point are saying that are that our discussion should revolve around whether or not we think that this is something that would be reasonable in the zone. And to say, so that we would say, no, we don't think this is reasonable in this zone at all, or yes, we do think this is reasonable in the zone, and we would send back a favorable recommendation pending an ordinance change allowing for two-family homes based on a council discussion. The reason I favor that is I do think that we were sent such a nonspecific order that it is difficult to ascertain exactly what they would like. But I think by sending back a motion to either recommend or not recommend pending specific information, it gives clear direction that we will have made the decision for ourselves, yes, we think this can fit in this zone, but it cannot change now because there are other zoning changes required to make it happen, or no, we don't think this would fit at all, and so that's why. I would be favor, I would be in favor of taking a different tack rather than table.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion of the motion? Mr. Martelli?
I agree with Mr. Seer on this issue, so.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
You've convinced me too, actually.
What was that?
He's convinced me as well. I believe, yeah, we can come up with a
That's why we make motions, so that we can
And that's why we discuss them, exactly. So if there's no more discussion, all those in favor? All those against? Abstentions? Okay, so the motion fails? At this point, I would need a motion for us to continue unless people have other discussion points they would like to have.
I would make a motion that we forward a favorable recommendation to implement the language outlined in blue on the staff report dated March 25th, 2021, with the edit described in the previous motion, subject to an ordinance change by the council to allow for a second dwelling unit within the low-density country residential zone.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion on the table to think favorably about this and entertain ordinance language from city council for the low-density country residential. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. At this time, we'll move our discussion on to the consideration of the language. Consideration of the Agricultural Resource and Protection Zone, and consideration of two-family use allowance for that zone. Staff, do you have any comments on this?
So it wouldn't necessarily be allowing two families in that zone. It would be allowing a second principal structure, a second principal dwelling on a lot that already has a single-family dwelling. It's troublesome for us as staff because the ag zone doesn't allow a single-family dwelling unless you can meet the income requirements. So by allowing an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling to add an additional principal dwelling where their neighbor can't even put one house on the lot, just seems, I guess, inequitable to us. We don't, we don't see that as something that we would support doing. It's also in, you could say that it's in contrary with the comprehensive plan, which encourages the agriculture zone to stay as a non-growth type area. So, I don't know, I, as staff, this isn't something that we would get behind just because of the nature of the ag zone and the dwellings that are out there. I think it makes sense in the low-density country where a single family is permitted, but where a single family isn't even permitted in the ag zone unless you meet those income requirements, it wouldn't make sense to allow someone to add another one. So that's kind of our viewpoint on it. But, you know, it's up to the board if you want to make a recommendation to city council, one way or the other.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Mr. Seer?
I had the same thought you had with regard to the comprehensive plan. It's my understanding that making such a change would first require an amendment to the comprehensive plan? Because we are not allowed to, as I understand, we're prohibited in ordinance to zone anything that or to create zoning ordinance that is contrary to the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
That's correct. So this particular zone would not require simply deciding whether or not we want to allow for more than one primary dwelling? Would also require an amendment to the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
The policy direction in the comprehensive plan does not in any way encourage second dwellings in the agriculture.
Yeah, I ask, because we've done some things in the past where we say it's not necessarily prohibited, and we are able to find other parts of the comprehensive plan that allow us to say, yes, we feel reasonably, but the ag zone is a little bit different. Second question I asked earlier, I'll ask it again and be more specific to the ag zone. You mentioned a non-conforming house. I guess those houses aren't really non-conforming. They were made conforming, the adoption of the ag zone, but those houses that are not required to meet the income standard, that's how I refer to them.
Right, yeah.
So those pre-existing houses that are not required to meet the income standard, should one of those individuals wish to, were this to move forward and be approved, and one of those individuals wished to build a second, single-family dwelling on that lot, would that second, single-family dwelling have to meet the income standard for the ag zone?
The way the language is written, it says that a single-family detached dwelling, so I would assume that they would also have to meet the income standards on family detached dwellings, unless this is amended again to say two-family detached dwellings, or it would have, some other language that's not two-family, but yeah, they would, and they'd also have to have 10 acres for each dwelling.
Okay. I ask only because I have brought up concerns of equity in the past. However, I think this is one of those interesting cases where the neighbor who currently can't build their house would be in the same position as the person who wants to build another house, because they would both be burdened by the same requirement. That's all I have, are questions for staff.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just for clarity, because, I don't know, I think I'm having a difficult time hearing with the masks and such, but you're saying that the staff would not endorse this for this zone, or they would endorse it?
We wouldn't for the ag zone.
Currently, there are properties in the ag zone with more than one dwelling, correct?
Yeah, I believe so. I found some maps earlier that showed two families and some multifamily properties in the ag zone, so I do believe they exist. I don't think there, there's a lot of them, but I do know they exist.
So just thinking back when, you know, farming was more prevalent, and you would have extended families, that that would be not only desirable, but needed. And things have progressed in a different way where family is needed, but not as workers, but to help support them. Knowing that there's some that exist in the ag zone currently, and it's not taxing on the community, I'm still, I still think we should give it its due.
Any other questions for staff? So we are in a public hearing. We can move to the public comment section? I would need a motion.
Motion to open this public comment section of the hearing?
Thank you. I have a motion to open. Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor? This time, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak with the board, come forward. Seeing none? I would need a motion to close.
So moved?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Thank you. Any discussion of this?
I will start by saying that I do not see, I do not see allowing something like this creating a fundamental change in the zone. If anything, if a change like this were to be used, it would actually put some agriculture back in the agricultural zone, which it is currently heavily lacking. Because that secondary dwelling unit would be required to meet the the income standard. What I think to me presents the largest issue is the language in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan really acts as our, as our sort of, our driver in our vision, and the ag zone, as described in the comprehensive plan, is quite limited. And so I am not sure that we could I think that we could, if we chose to say that we were in favor of something like this, in the same way that we did with the last one, which is to say that we are in favor of the idea, but obviously it cannot be implemented, and further work would need to be done, it would need to be clear that it would not be just asking the council to look at language and determining how to decide the way they want to write in whether, how that second dwelling unit will exist as either a multifamily or a second single-family, but rather that it needs, it would need to be revisiting of the, of of the language describing the ag zone itself in the comp plan. And that is, that's a big undertaking, and I guess I would want to know from the members of the board who are on the comp plan, are we seeing, are we going to be seeing any such changes? Are you at liberty to say? You guys may not be able to discuss it.
I could address that. So, yeah, so far in the zoning section of the comp plan, there have been no changes to the ag zone.
Yeah, and I think to further that, from where I sit as chair, it makes more sense, as Mr. Seer says, if this would require a revision of the comprehensive plan, that we let the current update run its course, and then if there are changes to the comprehensive plan that would allow something like this, that city council then send us something at that time, but it feels to me slightly out of order to. So let me rephrase that. I'm not sure I can recommend that city council, that the board would be in favor of exploring something or looking at language to something without first having a comprehensive plan that allowed for that and would allow us, because it is our guidebook, so it just seems procedurally to not make sense to recommend something against our guidebook.
I would just add that although we haven't currently changed anything in the ag zone, we haven't voted on anything either, so it could change, but so far, so good.
Mr. Seer?
Yeah, I guess I'll sort of be a broken record here and say, yeah, I, again, I see nothing wrong with it. In fact, I'm fundamentally in favor of such a change. We legally cannot make this change with the comprehensive plan being written the way it is, regardless of whatever recommendation we send to city council. And I'll be quite frank that it upsets me. For me, it highlights the fundamental problem with our ag zone, which is that we call it an agricultural resource protection zone, but we don't actually want anyone to do anything with their land in that zone. Sure, you can be a farmer if you can pop up a farm overnight and have the capital to invest in a full build-out, but realistically, who can do that? So ultimately, what we're saying is we just want nothing to happen there. Uh, it's 40% of our landmass. And I think issues like this keep coming up and it, it highlights the need to address the, the, the elephant in the room, which is that the ag zone is used as, it's called the ag zone, but it's the ag, agricultural and resource protection zone. And ultimately, we use it as a conservation zone, which is why we will continue to run into these problems. Because we have superimposed a conservation zone over what were traditionally working residential zones. And I've said my piece on that, but.
And I would just say noted, um, and that, that fundamental piece is not our problem to solve.
Unfortunately, it, it's, it, unfortunately, it is not our problem to solve in this, in this planning, in this, in this hearing, I agree. But I felt I would be remiss without, um, explaining why I'm in favor of this and, and fundamentally why I think that we cannot move forward. And that the reason we cannot move forward has less to do with, um, whether or not these changes would fit a particular neighborhood or use, and more to do with a fundamental flaw in, in the way we've chose to use, uh, a particular zoning district since the early 60s.
Yep. Understood. Any more thoughts from the board? Hearing none, I'd need a motion on how we want to proceed with this.
Make a motion that city council not include the ag zone in the two-family dwelling unit ordinance.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a second. Any discussion of that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion.
Thank you.
To include, to include fighting stating that, uh, at this time, uh, we believe such a change is not permissible, uh, under ordinance, uh, due to its incongruence with the comprehensive plan. And that such a change would necessitate a change in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I have an amendment. Do I have a second? A second. Any discussion of that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment? Passes. So the motion as made and seconded is, um, Megan, you might have to help me here. Is for us to not pers- or is to recommend that city council not pursue two-dwelling in the ag district. And the mi- main reason being that we, that is, we're not able to proceed forward because that is not allowed by the comp plan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. All right. That one's done. Moving on to item three on our agenda is a public hearing ordinance amendment. Um, proposed amendment of chapter 60, article four, division seven and eight, section 60 dash 307, one, two, and 60 dash 335, one, two, dimensional regulations, multifamily suburban district and multifamily urban district of the Auburn, Auburn Code of Ordinances to change lot depth density requirements. Staff?
This recommended change is to address a conflicting dimensional regulation that we have in the ordinance for multifamily urban and multifamily suburban. First, I think it's important just to point out that a multifamily building is defined as a residence that's designed or occupied by three or more families with separate housekeeping and cooking facilities for each. Uh, both the multifamily urban and multifamily suburban have specific density requirements for one, two, three, four, and multifamily buildings, which have conflicting width and depth requirements. Um, so we have two recommendations that I, I think would help fix this. Uh, first, because we have that support of the multifamily building definition, we recommend that, uh, the lot dimension requirements for both multifamily urban and multifamily suburban, remove the references to the three and four families because those are captured under that multifamily, um, definition. And second, um, just a correction to the lot dimensions for the multifamily suburban. Um, they require 100 feet in depth for a one, two, three, or four family, but then it goes up to 200 feet in depth for a multifamily. Again, because a three or a four unit could take advantage of that 100 foot in depth, it would make sense and be more clear if we also, um, revised the depth requirement for multifamily buildings to be 100 feet. So that the changes are, are shown in your staff report, um, and I think it's something that makes sense and, and is easy enough to do without causing any substantial changes to the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, uh, we can move to public comment?
I make a motion to open the public comments section of the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor? At this time, we'd like to welcome, I mean, any member of the public to come forward and speak to the board about this particular agenda item. Seeing no one step forward, I need a motion to close.
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor? Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, I need a motion?
I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation, a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the ordinance language as follows. Section 60 dash 307, section, uh, one subsection two dimensional regulations for multifamily suburban. Uh, remove references to three and four families, uh, amend the lot depth for multifamily to be 100 feet to match the other requirements of the district. And section 60 dash 335, uh, section one subsection two dimensional regulations for multifamily urban, remove references to three and four families.
Second. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to item four on the agenda, we have, uh, proposed amendment to, of chapter 60, article four, division 10, to remove the downtown enterprise zone from the Auburn Code of Ordinances. Staff?
Yeah, so with the recent form-based code changes that we made to the, to add the, uh, downtown enterprise area to the T41 and T42, we no longer have the downtown enterprise zoning district, so we recommend removing it from the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I make a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Seer. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? This time, if there are any members of the public who would like to address the board about this agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Second.
That's seconded. All those in favor? Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I need a motion?
I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation to the city council to remove division 10 of article four, chapter 60, from the ordinances as the zoning district no longer exists.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Thank you. All those in favor? Excellent. Moving right along to item five on the agenda. Proposed amendment of chapter 60, article four, division 12, general business, business two, section 60 dash 525B14 of the Auburn Code of Ordinances to fix the, fix the improper reference from section 60 dash 499A to section 60 dash 525A. Staff?
This is another really straightforward one. Um, the special exception uses for general business two reference allowing any new building of 5,000 square feet or more or any existing building, which proposes a use permitted under section 60 499A. Um, section 60 499A is actually the allowed uses for general business, not general business two. And just a little bit of background info, um, in the 1990s, the planning board and city council decided that they didn't want Minnetonka to become another center street with all the car sales. So that's why they created the general business two zone. Um, and the biggest difference between the two is that the general business two doesn't list auto sales as permitted. And so, um, they're not specifically prohibited, but they're only allowed where they're listed as permitted. So the way the language is written with that error, um, it essentially allows all uses that are permitted under the general business to be allowed as special exceptions in the general business two, which wasn't the, the intent of that. So we recommend, uh, making that change.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? This point, I'd like to open public comment.
I make a motion to open the public comments section of the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? At this time, if there are any members of the public that would like to address the board on this topic, please come forward. Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to item six.
Oh. We've got a, we've got to make a motion on the item first.
Did we, oh, you're right. Discussion of the amendment.
I know, we're going along so fast.
We're, we're, I, I skipped that part. Um, any discussion of the amendment? I mean, of the, this item. Hearing none, I need a motion?
I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation to the city council to amend chapter 60, article four, division 12, section 60 dash 524, uh, s- section of B14 to remove reference to section 60 dash 499A and replace it with section 60 dash two, uh, 525A.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Thank you. Now we can move to item six. A pro- pro- public hearing ordinance amendment for proposed amendment of chapter 60, division 14, section 60 dash 553 of the Auburn, Auburn Code of Ordinances to explain the purpose of the conservation open space form-based code district. Staff?
Again, another straightforward one. Under our existing form-based code, we have six transects. And, um, each one has an intent, purpose, space, and bulk requirements except for transit six, which are the conservation open space standards. Um, and you've got a map in your packet that shows where this area is. It's basically just the Riverwalk. And we recently had a CMP proposal to replace some existing infrastructure in that area and realized we have no standards or purpose or anything for this district, though it, it is self-explanatory in the title, but we just recommended adding, um, that language that we borrowed from the comp plan, which would state the conservation open space district is reserved for natural resources and compatible open space uses such as agriculture and forestry, low-intensity recreation facilities that provide water access and similar low-impact uses. Um, and it'll help if anything comes up in the future, just to have that purpose statement in the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the board? Seeing none, I need a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second? All in favor? At this time, if there are any members of the public who wish to address the board on this topic, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'd need a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
Thank you. I have a second. All those in favor? Any discussion of this item by the board? Hearing none, I would need a motion to proceed.
I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation, uh, to the city council to amend the ordinance language as follows. Section 60 dash 553, intent and purpose, uh, to read the conservation open space district is reserved for natural resource and compatible open space uses such as agriculture and forestry, low-intensity recreation, facilities that provide water access and similar low-impact uses.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sec- second.
I have a second. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Thank you. Um, moving on to item number seven, public hearing ordinance amendment of the proposed amendment of chapter 60, article 12, division two, division two, section 60 dash 668B1 of the Auburn Code of Ordinances to match the elevation requirement to current FEMA regulations. Staff?
Again, another straightforward one. The current FEMA regulations require the lowest floor of buildings to be elevated to one foot above the base flood elevation. The current language in this section pertaining to mobile homes in floodplain districts says that the lowest floor of the mobile home has to be elevated to or above the base flood elevation. And where we have that requirement from FEMA that they have to be at least one foot above the base flood elevation, we just re- recommend the language be updated to match FEMA requirements.
Thank you. Any questions of staff for the board? Yes, Mr. Martelli?
How many mobile homes are going to be affected by this?
Well, they're affected by it now anyways. Um, we, we have to apply the FEMA regulations that they're elevated a foot above the base flood elevation. We just don't have the matching language in our ordinance.
Right, so all existing mobile homes are, are safe?
Unless they remove them and want to put one back. If they remove it by more than 50% or make more than 50% of the market value of the structure in improvements, that would require them to elevate under current FEMA standards.
Uh, I think you missed my question. In other words, all existing mobile homes right now don't have to be raised up that extra foot?
They do not unless they make 50% of their.
Only for new construction, new mobile homes coming in.
Right.
All right, very good.
Any other questions for staff?
I make a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
Thank you. I have a second. All those in favor? Uh, this time, I'd like to welcome any members of the public who are present and would like to address the board on this topic to step forward. Seeing none, I mean, would need a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Board discussion? Hearing none, in order to proceed, we do need a motion.
Make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation to the city council to amend the ordinance language as follows. Chapter 60, article 12, division two, section 60 dash 668, section B subsection one. Mobile homes shall be elevated, elevated as follows. General requirements that the lowest floor of a mobile home be elevated to one foot above the base flood elevation. Striking ore.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to item eight, that's a public hearing ordinance amendment. Proposed amendment of chapter 60, article 12, division five, section 60 dash 992 of the Auburn Code of Ordinances to amend the lot depth requirement for non-conforming lots in the shoreline zone. Staff?
Uh, this is one I think is worth a little bit, uh, more time than the others. We don't have any projects right now. We don't have any projects right now, so it's not time-sensitive, but it's something that we did want to get on the planning board's radar. Just in summary, lots that are less than a hundred and twenty feet in depth, measured at right angles to the shoreline, which were in existence on or before December seventeenth of nineteen seventy-three, which is when the shoreline zone regulations started to go into effect, they can have a shoreline setback requirement of fifty percent of the lot depth. So typically, structures in the shoreline zone have to be set back at least a hundred feet from the normal high-water mark of a stream or pond or wetland. And in this case, because the lots are only a hundred and twenty feet deep, they can't meet that one-hundred-foot setback and also have a structure on the lot. So this provision was a special local condition approval that we got through DEP when we were going through the process of implementing the shoreline ordinance, and that's given the conditions in a lot of the lots that we have on Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond. So, our recommendation, and we did speak preliminarily with DEP about this, because we have quite a few lots in these areas that will have, say, a hundred and twenty-five feet in lot depth, and then the one next door has a hundred and nineteen feet in lot depth, and yet, the one nineteen can take advantage of this fifty percent, but the one twenty-five can't. Yeah, I know you have to draw the line somewhere, but we were thinking that if we increased it to a hundred and fifty feet, we could pull in a few extra lots, and, and this would really benefit them to be able to have the extra room to build a structure or an addition. So like I said, to make any amendments to the shoreline zone ordinance, we have to go through the same local condition review process with DEP, which will require us to show how many lots a change like this would affect, and the added benefit of having that additional area to build. And I think this is something the planning board would want to see anyways before making a decision on this, just because it's, it's a good exercise to go through to see really what that impact would be, to add that thirty feet to that standard before we go through and, and the, the public process with DEP to formally change that. So we can certainly, if the planning board's in favor of something like this, we can certainly go through and see how many lots this would affect. If the planning board says, no, thank you, we don't want to deal with this right now, that's fine. Like I said, there's no projects, it's not time-sensitive, but it is something that we wanted to get on your radar, so.
Thank you. So I just have a clarification question. What you just said there sounded more like this was a workshop-type item, but we're in a public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, we, we put all of these on the agenda for a public hearing because we weren't sure where we were going to be at this meeting, in terms of where the projects were going to be standing and what we wanted to do with them, so we didn't want to lose the public hearing piece of it if the planning board did want to make a recommendation to city council.
But we, in, in this case, we're not bound to make any recommendation to city council, but we needed to table this item in order to get more information. Is that correct?
And/or you could say, I want to make a recommendation to increase the, the requirement to a hundred and fifty feet, and the city council can require staff to pull in all that information, and then you skip that process, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Mr. Martelli?
The setback on this, this is only for Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond?
It would be for any property that's in the shoreline zone, so there's some properties on the river as well that would be affected.
You're saying on the Andrews-Coggan River?
The Andrews-Coggan, Little Andrews-Coggan.
Right.
Taylor Brook.
Taylor Brook, all of those.
All, all rivers and lakes, basically.
Yeah, all these areas in dark green, light green, and orange, except for the Turnpike, I think that's, yeah, Turnpike.
Other questions for staff?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So in looking at this, I think, I think staff probably hit the nail on the head by, by mentioning Taylor Pond, of course. Lake Auburn has taken, is, is sort of prohibited because of what we mentioned earlier with regard to the septic ordinance. I have a question about the Taylor Pond overlay. If I remember correctly, there are other limiting factors for buildings around Taylor Pond. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. There's a provision requiring a specific type of road, so it doesn't have to be a public road, but it, you can't like build a new private road to do it, if I remember correctly. It has to be an existing. And they're required to hook up to city sewer and city water if they are on the eastern side, correct?
Yeah, there's definitely requirements for connecting, there's requirements for phosphorus plans, there's, there's a lot of requirements, extra hurdles in the Taylor Pond. So it's unfortunate that, for the properties that are in Taylor Pond, shoreline, and Flood Plain, because they get hit three times with a, a whole slew of standards.
Right, so it's not like doing this somehow opens a floodgate to someone being able to do something that is already highly regulated?
No, it would just, yeah, it would just give some more flexibility.
Other questions for staff? Hearing none, we can move to the public comment.
I make a motion to open the public comments section of the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite any member of the public who wishes to speak to the board on this subject to come forward. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Hearing none, I think we'd need a motion to proceed.
I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation to the city council to begin the process of coordinating with DEP to increase the lot depth for non-conforming lots from one hundred and twenty feet to one hundred and fifty feet within the shoreline, within the shoreline zone. Yeah, that's, the rest of it's not really something we can require, so.
Second. Thank you. I have a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, we'd like to vote. All those in favor? Thank you. The motion passes. All right, moving on to item nine. Public hearing ordinance amendment. Proposed amendment of chapter sixty, article sixteen, division four subdivision of the Auburn Code of, Code of Ordinances to remove the Mylar requirement, reduce the required number of copies for submissions to fifteen, and consistently reference staff members as the director of planning and permitting or their designee. Staff?
This is another straightforward one. The ordinance requires twenty copies of the materials for planning board, and we end up recycling a lot of them. We have the nine planning board members, and then three that we save for staff, and one or two for department heads. Most of them prefer electronic copies anyways, so we just recommended to get rid of the twenty requirements and just have fifteen. The registry also updated their recording requirements, so they no longer require Mylars, so we wanted to reflect that in the ordinance. And lastly, I haven't had a chance to go through and pull out all of these references, but I can, obviously, for the city council meeting. But the ordinance references planning staff, city planner, director of economic development, director of planning, a bunch of different references for planning staff, so we thought it would be important to have them all be consistent in say, the director of planning and permitting, or their designee. So, pretty simple.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Did you happen to bring a Mylar to show us what that looks like?
I could go dig one up downstairs if you'd like.
No, I'm okay.
Mr. Seer?
No, I was going to say, maybe we could go back to about a decade ago where all planning board members got the full-size maps of everything too.
You want the full-size maps again?
That was crazy.
Okay, I was going to say.
I'm just saying, we're in the right direction.
I was going to say, I don't think we want to see Mr. Seer start twitching when the Mylars start coming in. Okay, so we have asked questions of staff. At this point, I would need a motion to opine public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. I would like to invite any members of the public who would wish to address the board on this topic to come forward. Seeing none, I would need a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Discussion of this one from the board? Hearing none, I'd like to hear a motion.
I'd like to offer a recommendation to, I'd make a motion to rec, offer a recommendation to city council to amend the number of required submission copies for site plans, special exception subdivision review to fifteen copies, remove all references to Mylars, and consistently reference planning staff as the director of planning and permitting, or their designee throughout the ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And moving on to item ten on our agenda. Public hearing ordinance amendment. Proposed amendment of chapter sixty, article sixteen, division four, section sixty dash one-three-six-seven Recreation Open Space Standards of the Auburn Code of Ordinances to specify that it only applies to single-family residential subdivisions. Staff?
This is another one that I think will take a little bit more time and discussion by the board, and some members are already aware of this issue with the project over on North River Road that was reviewed probably about a year ago now. In our subdivision ordinance, we have standards that are specific to recreation and open space. When these standards were created in the subdivision ordinance, they were only intended to apply to single-family residential subdivisions. On July first of twenty eighteen, the definition of a subdivision was changed to exclude the division of a new or existing structure into three or more dwelling units, whether that division is accomplished by sale, lease, development, or otherwise, in a municipality where the project is subject to municipal site plan review. So with this change, it became unclear whether or not the planning board was allowed to make a determination as to whether or not our site plan review process was more stringent or as stringent as the subdivision review process. And we've had a lot of questions about this interpretation internally, and there's a lot going on around this language that hopefully the state will address at some point. But it doesn't really matter, because even if our review process for site plan and subdivision, they're similar enough, but the recreation and open space standards are specific to the subdivision review. So we think it's important to clarify, especially given these recent changes to subdivision law, that the Recreation Open Space Standards apply only to single-family residential subdivisions and not to multifamily projects. So the standards, for those of you who aren't familiar with it from the North River Road project, they require a fee in lieu that's based on the market value of the lot, or one acre of open space for the first ten units, and then five thousand square feet for each additional unit after that. The multifamily zoning district, for example, allows seventeen units per acre, so if a developer wanted to create one seventeen-unit building on one acre, they wouldn't be able to meet the one-acre required amount of open space and would have to pay a fee in lieu for that. And the example that we use most often is the city-owned property at one eighty-six Main Street. It has about point-one-three acres of lot area with a value of thirty-two thousand five hundred. So eighteen units on that property would require a little under two acres of open space, one point-nine-two acres of open space, if these requirements were applied, and the fee in lieu of the open space would be four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is cost prohibitive and would really prevent redevelopment of that property. So it's also important the planning board considers that these urban downtown areas, in theory, already have recreational opportunities for residents and access to the various downtown amenities. I shouldn't say in theory, they do have the recreation amenities for these types of projects. So, you know, adding twenty people to the Riverwalk isn't going to affect anything, and it's not going to cost the city any money, I guess, in a way. So, we just recommend clarifying the ordinance language that the, these standards only apply to the traditional rural subdivisions and not to a multifamily building in an urban area.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Seer?
If we change the language to be specific to single-family residential subdivisions, does that mean a subdivision taking advantage of the use of duplexes would not be required to demonstrate an open space, a recreation in open space?
That would be correct if that's, if that was the way the language was phrased. Yeah, that's a good point.
Any other questions?
If we were to change this ordinance so that it, it applied to buildings and not dwelling, or units, how would that affect things?
So the number of buildings?
Right.
So if you have, let's see, the first ten buildings would require an acre of open space, and then five thousand square feet for each additional building after that? I think that's an option. Trying to think, I can't do math, especially not on the spot, so I'm trying to think of, of what that would be, would be what, a tenth of an acre for, per unit in the building? Or, yeah, per unit, right?
Yeah.
Per building, whatever it is, yeah.
I, I guess my thinking there is that, that would, that would set the standard that any subdivision should think about recreation and open space.
Yeah, so I have, I know some people who have moved into the, I don't know the name of the complex, the Grace Lawn.
Oh, yep.
Beautiful units, very happy being there. How does that affect that? Because one of the things I think it's probably missing from that location is green space.
Yeah, I think Grace Lawn was one of the ones that, I wasn't here when that one was approved, but I think it's one of the ones that paid a fee in lieu for a recreation facility that was in the area, I believe, I don't know.
I could speak to that one.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So, if I remember correctly, there was a small in lieu of fee, but, and the reason that that fee was reduced was a finding by the planning board that that project had proximity to the ball fields and playground on Grace Lawn. So they, they didn't, so they met, they met, if I remember correctly, I want to say they met something like, I can't even remember. It, it, they met some of the standard, obviously, right? Because there was green space, and you have to remember that like open green space covers more than you might think it does, right? But yeah, so in that case, part of it was because of its proximity to, to recreational Along with the discussion of the, the city desiring to, at some point, put a sidewalk as well, so that it would be easy access.
Other questions for staff? Yeah, Mr. Martelli?
North River Road complex, they paid a, a fee for open space, right?
They did, yes.
What was that total?
Um, I think it was.
Thirty-four thousand?
It was something like that, yeah, I was going to say around forty.
Any other questions for staff? I actually have one. So. I actually have one. So, you're speaking about urban, so the effect of urban and more the single-family being traditionally more rural. Where, so something like North River Road, which we're talking about, I'm not sure how urban that particular, so the application there is, you know, putting buildings kind of far out toward the edge of the ag zone. Would there be a way to, like, or is it worth considering, in your opinion, that this apply in some places but not others?
Yeah, Eric and I, we're just, we were chatting about this this afternoon, and one option that we thought about was just applying it in the Form-Based Code areas and the general business areas, because Form-Based Code captures all of the multifamily urban districts, and then general business reverts to the multifamily standards. So with North River Road, that, that is a general business district down there, so they were pulled in under the general business requirements. So I think those two districts could be a consideration by the board.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I need a motion to open the public comments section, portion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite any member of the public who wishes to address the board on this topic to step forward and speak. Seeing none, I would need a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right, discussion on this one by the board.
So it sounds like we have a problem that we have to solve here, and the agenda item has given us one solution. It sounds as though the discussion that you had with Eric this afternoon, to me, sounds like another solution that's not the same thing. So I guess, I mean, we have a couple of different options here. I mean, I think it's probably pretty easy to agree that, you know, there's some sort of change that needs to happen in the downtown because nobody's gonna be able to fit those requirements. It's just a matter of how we're doing it. I don't know, I, I would tend to want some sort of a concession to recreation and open space for any development, as long as it's not prohibitive to construction. So if it was something that was happening in the downtown, you're right, you absolutely have the River Walk. But I still think that part of building in the downtown should be a consideration for open space for the rest of the city. So it, it doesn't need to be big, in my opinion. I feel you need to do something, though. And so that's why I asked the question earlier about buildings rather than units. And I'm not sure if that's a perfect solution or not, but it was something that I, I thought of. So I guess I'm not sure if anybody has, if anybody agrees with that, or if they have a better idea, or what.
So if I may rephrase a little bit, I hear you suggesting that personally you might want to explore the several solutions that are out there before actually making a recommendation.
Yeah, or, I mean, I think we, maybe we can hash them out tonight, possibly, maybe, but yeah, sure.
Thank you. Mr. Seer.
So, I agree with Mr. Staples that there's a problem in front of us tonight, but I think we're being asked to solve one problem on that isn't actually a problem. I think the issue is that we call it a fee in lieu. And a fee in lieu implies that you're going to pay us something because you couldn't give us something. The reality is, if you read the language, the fee in lieu is determined by the recreation board based on the impact that the project is likely to have on the, the local recreation facilities. So, in my mind, the, the problem is not that we charge something, it's that we call it a fee in lieu when in fact it's an impact fee that we're charging, knowing that if we put up a seventeen-unit building in proximity to a playground or a track or a recreational walking path, that those will see additional traffic. And the recreation board is tasked with identifying what the needs might be and developing that fee based on those needs, so. I, I certainly understand where staff is coming from. I'm sure that no developer wants to walk into the planning office and be told that there's a fee, particularly given that they're allowed to build a certain size building on a lot, and then we tell them that, by the way, you are also required to have recreation open space, and if you can't, you owe us a fee in lieu of. But again, I think the problem is that we call it a fee in lieu. It, it's, it's actually an impact fee. And there's a reason that it's there for these developments.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the board?
One question. So using that example of the thirty-four to forty thousand dollars fee in lieu, are we suggesting that that fee then goes to the recreation department because they're maintaining parks?
It did. It hasn't been, the fee hasn't been paid yet because it's for the inhabitants of that subdivision, so it won't be paid until they actually occupy the units, but it will go to the recreation department, and they will be tasked with using it in that area. And at the recreation board meeting, they had to specify what types of projects they would use it on that would specifically benefit the residents in that neighborhood. They were talking about a dog park and those sorts of things nearby with a vacant piece of land that they acquired as part of another project for the open space requirements. So they were gonna use the fee in lieu to help that. They talked about connecting the River Walk, a few different things that they were talking about.
So I guess I'm looking at this requirement a little bit differently, thinking that if you have a parcel, you could either build it out to its maximum and pay a fee in lieu, or build it to, to what the design of this is and have green space and recreational space that in my opinion would be more appropriate and aesthetically pleasing, but might not impact an investor's bottom line to the degree at which they, they hoped. But, you know, they're not, they're not building on every square inch of the place if they're leaving some, some green.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue comes in really in those, like I said, the Form-Based Code areas where the lots are tiny as they, as it is, and the setback requirements in the ordinance, they can build right up to the property line. So the Form-Based Code in that, in that area with one-eighty-six Main Street encourages buildings to take up a large portion of the lot and be close to the street to, for that walkable type of downtown. So by requiring them to pay a fee in lieu, and the ordinance does have, it has some requirements for how that's determined. It's based on the market value and the assessor determines it, and it's, it's in there for how that fee has to be determined. And then the input from the recreation board, of course, but it's just, it's a deterrent to developers in the Form-Based Code area where we already have those, those loose standards for setback requirements. So it's, it's definitely geared more towards the, like we said, the rural type of subdivisions.
So building on Main Street makes sense. You've got to shoehorn a building in there and you've got green space around it. The Grace Lawn property, one could argue that one structure is enough. Two, you could probably rationalize. Three, I might suggest is too much. And that's what I see, is the purpose of this is, we might have, we might have gone a little overboard on that and not enforced this to the degree in which we should, perhaps. Is this a workaround, essentially?
Well, originally, the subdivision definition excluded the division of an existing building or a new building into three or more units. So those multifamily buildings, for example, we had the North River Road project we keep talking about is three twelve-unit buildings. So those three buildings in and of themselves would not have been subject to subdivision review, therefore, they wouldn't have been subject to these recreation open space requirements. Because the state changed the law, which the city had no input in, they're now pulled in under these requirements, which, you know, we, we feel weren't intended to apply to those multifamily-type buildings. So we just wanna try and address that, especially since it's come up a few times for different projects.
Mr. Seer.
Yeah, I, I've spoken with Eric Cousins about this. And it's clear he very much shares your opinion. I would, I would expect that you guys work together as, as staff and that's the recommendation you're coming to us with. I guess I think about, and I say, it was an unintended consequence of the law, the change in law at the state level. But I would argue that maybe it's something we should have been doing to begin with. With this in place, as Mr. Dubois pointed out, it requires a developer to look and say, I can either scale back my development in order to meet some of these requirements, and that might hurt my bottom line, or I can maximize my profit margin and be required to pay again, and I will call it an impact fee, because I believe that's what it is, an impact fee, based on the assumption that the folks that are now in this new development are going to take advantage of the recreational opportunities around them. If we're talking about the most urban parts of the city, those recreational opportunities are all city-maintained opportunities. I understand that this, it was not intended to apply to these, to these projects. I think my counterargument is that maybe it ought to always have applied to these projects.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board? So just to sum up what I'm, what I've heard is people have tossed out various ideas from switching the metric from unit to building, changing how we think about the fee, limiting to specific zoning districts. And we've also heard talk about the importance of green space and the importance of impact of residents in the event that there is no green space provided. Am I missing anything? As such, I think we need to find, decide how we move forward. I think we can make recommendations based off our discussion tonight, or we could also ask staff to let us look at some different options at a future meeting. Or just like, it would be, I think at this point it would be important for us to hear what various members of the board think is a way forward for us right now. Mr. Martelli?
I think if we're looking at such as Grace Lawn, within a short distance, you've got ice skating, you've got a fitness gym, you've got a walking track, you've got some trails, you know, right in that area. So maybe we should look at distance-wise from a, from an area, rather than, you know, trying to build something right there at that facility. You see what I'm saying?
I understand. How, how would that be described in ordinance? Or is that something that if there's an impact fee in the way that Mr. Seer is talking about, that the recreation committee actually considers? I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I just...
Well, in a downtown-type situation, you're not gonna be able to build a, you know, complete gym right on the, the property for the kids, you know, on every plot of, of ground, right? So maybe we can look at it, you know, within a radius of that area.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Dubois?
Just some personal perspective. I have a ninety-year-old friend that lives in that complex. He is not going to walk down a side, a, a, a street without a sidewalk to an existing park, but he might enjoy a gazebo on property. And I think aesthetically, that's some of what we're charged with for our community is to ensure that these guidelines are kept. So my feeling is that we, we table this, ask staff to come back with more options to consider, but it needs more processing.
Thank you. Anything else from members of the board?
Well, I wish, I'd like to wait for Megan to get back.
Yeah.
My question, when she does, is basically going to be, is this, is the solution that they are seeking specific to removing this requirement from multifamily development? If the answer is yes, I think we can look at all kinds of different options. But the reality is, if we don't want that, then our recommendation is no, we don't want this. But that doesn't preclude us from saying we initiate a zoning amendment change in which we say we want to accomplish some specific things. So, Megan, my question to you is, this is coming to us, is, so the intent is, the intent of this coming to us, was it specific to removing multifamily unit developments from this requirement? Not necessarily asking us for, what, what we, we think about it, but specifically asking us to remove those?
Right, the, the whole premise behind it is that the subdivision law was changed to now include the three or more dwelling units in a new or existing building, which it wasn't before, so...
So essentially, what we're being asked to do is to amend our language to return back to a state that existed prior to the amendment of the state language?
Correct.
So i- in that case, if that's what we're being asked to do, if we don't want, if we don't want to return to that, that's what we have to decide. If we don't want to return to that state, well, then we just, we, we don't need to come up with ideas. We just need to say, no, we don't approve this.
Yep.
Further say, we do think there is an issue, we'll work on addressing it.
Yeah, so I think that's a great observation. Thank you, Mr. Seer. We think this is a good idea, or we don't. If we wanna explore something else, we can do that after we decide this. So given that on this particular item in front of us, are there any last thoughts? So given that on this particular item in front of us, are there any last thoughts of the board? If there aren't further discussion topics, then I would need to hear a motion from us.
Well, I will make a motion, that way we can have the discussion. I make a motion that the planning board offer a recommendation to the City Council not to amend the recreation open space language to clarify that it only applies to single-family residential subdivisions.
Second.
Thank you, I have a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Now, we were discussing other things, and are there any other motions for future action that members of the board would like to make?
I make a motion that the planning board initiate a zoning amendment process of Chapter sixty, Article fourteen, Division four, Section sixty dash thirteen, sixty sec, sixty-seven, recreation open space, to discuss possible alternatives that meet the goal of maintaining open space, while, I'll leave it at that, I guess, I was gonna try to go more, but there's no need.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion of the motion?
So is the idea for staff to come back with a few different options at a future meeting for us to discuss?
So, there's a, a motion seconded, I would say if you want that to be part of the motion, and that's a good point, I left that out, I would make an amendment to the motion, to, to have it include...
Yep, yeah, that's not, that's not part of the motion at the moment.
I, I would, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to that motion.
I think...
So it doesn't actually have to be friendly, just offer an amendment.
I'll just offer the amendment.
You can just make a motion to amend, yeah.
Yeah, it's a motion to amend, friendly amendment is not a thing in this context.
We used it quite often, but it's really not a thing.
Got it.
So you would make a motion to amend.
I would make a motion to amend your, the motion on the floor to have staff come back with a few different options that would accomplish this task.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a second. All those in favor? The amendment passes, so the motion is for us to have a future discussion about the value of open space and to have staff bring options for how that might be accomplished in the future. Any other discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Passed unanimously, thank you. And that concludes item ten, there's one item left on the agenda, that's adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.